Yeah. Yeah, so he really is enamored with him. You know, he thinks. Yeah, we'll see where he's kind of good. And if you're anybody that you can decide how to. It's a point where all of everything in and looking.
I think uh liquor and security.
If if we're gonna be an entity, it's the.
Yeah, I've got an old. Like thirty of the five. A source of not that I can't. The ones that's late, but I do.
Do they actually still? Try got text Jerry this morning at seven times.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Oh, Jerry's.
Love this one.
Did you listen? Oh, didn't you get a chance to?
Right around your own or that's?
Not really, but. You did something.
Generate some heat maybe. Yeah. Be good.
You got a shared one?
I would have assumed they would have been available for this weekend considering the circumstances.
Morning. The morning meeting.
Yeah.
Sunshine.
Yes.
But it's below zero. Dave, uh Mr. Beats, I said I wished for the sun out. Uh you can have a bag now. This is what we get when we ask for the sun. That trade. See how moved. There you go. Must be something going on today. All the meeting. That we like to proceed.
No changes, Madam President?
Vote to approve his presentation.
Second.
Commissioners in your packet was sent out on Friday, a draft of the lease arrangement that we have prepared with Andy Scaffold and the ninety nine bottles. With ninety nine bottles and Kir Beirston LLC. They were the one proposal that came in for the Rose Creek Clubhouse Restaurant, which we would be wanting to discuss today so that they would have the opportunity to make some improvements in the facility and open as golf season opens the sometime in April. I don't know what date yet. We're hoping for sunny skies. And and in that lease arrangement, what we were able to put together with negotiations is a proposal for providing a restaurant, bar and beverage service for Rose Creek Golf Course during the golf season only, which would be approximately April first through the end of October. Again, the arrangements are in there so that in April and October, the opportunity is to modify the hours and to modify some of the services because, as we know, we may not open April one and that sometimes the weather might be really great for a week. And then after that, it gets really difficult for us to offer golf services because of snow or cold temperatures or whatever weather we might have. At this point, they would not be providing winter hours. The rent proposed is twelve percent of gross for the first two years. And then after that, there is a step increase if their sales are above five hundred thousand and one for fifteen percent. And then anything above seven hundred and fifty thousand and one cent at eighteen percent. We would be owning any the equipment that is in the property and taking care of that. They would be making payment on minor improvements. They're responsible for any paint and improvements in the kiosk, which are listed on one of the exhibits, which right now that's the only thing that they are proposing that they would make improvements on. And that is the one space in the building that has not been improved on since we owned the property. They are also looking at proposing that they would take care of expenses five hundred thou- five hundred dollars or less, things like cleaning the restaurant area, taking care of minor replacement of equipment. They're also looking at taking care of the dishwasher and the maybe adding an ice machine. They, the Park District would be taking care of the costs, including utilities, maintenance, repair and replacement of the equipment in the building for any larger expenses. And so with that, we would open it up for any questions or discussion that you would like to have.
I'd like to ask.
Pardon me?
What is the history of the of the business?
They are here, so why don't we ask them to answer that question for us? If you want to come up to the front there, settle.
Do you just want to start singing as soon as you hear it? Or I don't know. The the youngest youngest drinking song I ever learned.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, the history is ninety eight.
Joe starts with ninety eight.
Well, I was. Singing in his head the whole time. Down down.
Could be a longer meeting if we sing.
It would be a long day if we keep on going. Thank you for letting me come today and speak to the board. My name is Andy Scaffold. I'm my wife and myself operate ninety nine bottles. We started ninety nine bottles about twelve years ago. We had prior liquor stores prior to that. But ninety nine has been kind of our baby over the last twelve years. We expanded into the golf courses in Morehead. We operate the Meadows in the Village Green Golf Course currently. It's a unique business to operate with golf courses, as you guys probably know, with prior golf courses in town. It works really well for our business where we slow down in the summertime and then we can get busy on golf courses. And then when it speeds up for us in the retail store, it's a great spot for us to kind of alternate our staffing. But more importantly, we have staff that's super enthusiastic. We have Somali Asian staff. We have restaurant managers and supervisors that have great experience and backgrounds. And we're just thrilled to keep on adding into the restaurant business. And it's a good alternative for what we do at the retail stores.
So you've you have restaurants now?
We currently run the Village Green and the Meadows Golf Course as restaurants. Yes.
Sort of food do you serve?
Well, over there, we're a little bit limited because of the space that's there. But we do full catering for tournaments and but it's it's a lot of golf course fare. So it's some areas are set up for just quick grab and go sandwiches. We have hot food, you know, the the typical hot dogs and hamburgers, but we keep on adding additional items in there with hot sandwiches. And we do quesadillas and those type of things. And with this opportunity, we can really let the the food guys do their thing that they do best. And we just haven't had full facilities to be able to make all of those offerings. So we submitted as part of our application some sample menu items and and I think we'll continue to add on to those menu items. In fact, the the guys have been doing test kitchen stuff for the last three weeks. And I think there's some great, great product coming coming your way.
I don't suppose there's an off sale.
Not over there. There is in Morehead. We don't. We don't own an off sale in North Dakota yet.
Andy, do you expect to do charitable gaming?
We don't. That's it hasn't been on our radar. I guess we're not opposed to it. We're just don't have any plans for that yet.
Got it.
I didn't. That's the only question I had of you, but I have other questions, but you you can probably sit down if you want or or stay up there. Either way, don't feel like you have to.
I was just gonna ask you a quick question. So you you guys are in the restaurant business. You all pay attention to each other. So when you decided that this was something you wanted, I mean, this is just a personal question, but you guys wanted to venture into what what visions did you have for how this is going to work for you guys as opposed to maybe it hasn't dealt the best in the last couple of years?
So restaurants have been a very tough business the last handful of years. We've been lucky and very thankful for the restaurants that we have owned where during COVID, we had very small overhead and we weren't having to carry a full restaurant staff. And then more importantly, golf was one of the few things people did over the COVID years. And it we actually thrived really well during that time where a lot of restaurants were just kind of closed. So it worked out fairly well for us. But this opportunity allows us to kind of step up the game for the amount of offerings that we can offer through a, you know, a larger scale restaurant. It's perfectly time for that. I think we're all looking past COVID now and we want to move forward. But having a seasonal restaurant makes the restaurant business that much harder. And with having our retail store, we can offer full time employment to all of our managers and our employees. Then they can come in, work in the retail environment during the off season where you can't really have that alternative if you're just running straight restaurants. And it makes restaurants incredibly hard to staff for just part time and get halfway decent employees. It's a really tough challenge. And I think we've we've solved that and it's worked wonderfully for the last three years in Morehead and we hope to keep on expanding the North Dakota side.
That was going to be kind of a question I was going to have too, is do you think this will help you from a staffing perspective? Have three, three golf course locations to kind of schedule people, schedule staff?
It it does. It more importantly, to cover our general manager and our managers where we can have that extra volume to keep on increasing wages for them and and more importantly, retaining them so they don't go somewhere else where, you know, last couple of years, it's come out of our pocket to self fund those those good people in place. Now I think we have the volume to be able to start leveling that out a little bit. So it really does help us by adding this volume.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have I have a question of clarification about item one, four and fifteen point one. So page two and page eleven, if you numbered your pages. So one point four says the lease shall include personal landlord's personal property to include all current kitchen, equipment, tables, chairs, flatware, glassware and silverware owned by the landlord. Landlord shall be responsible for maintaining, repairing and replacing such items as provided in paragraph fifteen. And so then in paragraph fifteen, it says, well, it talks about repair and maintenance, but then specifically in fifteen point one, it talks about tenant's rent payment does not contemplate landlord's responsibility to provide any janitorial service or nominal maintenance and or repairs which cost less than five hundred dollars within the lease premises. I'm wondering, does that cover this one point four? Or is there something else that refers to one point four?
Well, not everything.
Fifteen point three. I'm sorry, go to fifteen point three. Tenant landlord shall work together in good faith, set forth an annual maintenance and replacement plan for landlord's personal property and equipment as outlined in one point four and one point four exhibit. So my question is dishes break, glasses break, things break. This reads to me as if we're going to replace dishes every year, glasses every year, just as regular use.
Again, the intent of the arrangement is that what's on that list of assets are the things that we currently know that we own. Some of those items may be things that our tenant does not want and will put those away in storage. In our discussions with Andy and and their group, we've come to the understanding that those things under five hundred dollars, they'd be willing to invest in and that, yes, they have to work amongst our regular budgeting so that it's something that we are less surprised. I mean, obviously, things break and we have to replace things. But if there is a change in menu or there's some other kind of activity that they really want to do, they need to visit with us. And as the landlord, we get to decide if it's something we want to invest in as well. And so it is a give and take.
So we will be buying new dishes every year? Is that what I'm reading? Okay, well, and fourteen, one point four says we're responsible for maintaining, repairing and replacing such items. And fifteen point three says we're going to annually maintain and replace. We're going to have an annual maintenance and replacement plan for landlord's personal property and equipment is outlined in exhibit one point four, which is this list. So if that's not the intent, then we should clarify that.
And maybe Jeff, can you speak to that one of anything less than five hundred dollars is is the leases? Replacement request?
Once again, it'd go back to fifteen point three in that landlord and tenant have to work together in good faith to set an annual maintenance and replacement plan. And so we have discretion to say, you know, we're not replacing dishes and and cups and everything else in which then the tenant would have to say, well, either I'm making do with what I have or I'm paying to replace them myself. And so that's where I think we'd still have final say and final authority is that we have a budget that we have to approve in September of every year, which will include, you know, some sort of, I'm sure escrow or maintenance plan as it relates to Rose Creek. And they might come to us for certain things and we'll either have to say, yeah, it's within our budget or no, it's not, or they have to prioritize what would fall into that and what won't fall into it. Which I suppose if we have an annual budget of five thousand dollars or whatever for replacement and there's nothing on tap and they want new plates or bowls or cups that they could request it and we could consider it.
So if Andy's intent is not to come to us and say, hey, we broke twelve glasses last year, three shot glasses are lit missing because somebody stuck them in their pocket. And he's comfortable with it, it seems. Why don't we just put? Why don't we just clarify it in fifteen point three rather than having to work together in good faith and create some kind of? I mean, I it if we lay it out ahead of time and everybody's in agreement, doesn't it seem to be a lot easier than hoping that everybody agrees later? You know, the dishes were an easy one for me to grab just because you know that dishes are gonna get lo- get lost or broken or things like that. But you know, the televisions, that was another thing. I mean, they're only going to have a certain lifespan. Do we want to be in the business of buying televisions and? And then you mentioned if they don't use something, we're going to put it in storage. So then the question is, can we get rid of things because they're now on this list? So if they're on this list and it's in our lease and we get rid of it, do we need to then buy it? They decide they want it later. Oh, we're not using this, but now we want it. Now I'm just asking on the front end. So we know we have our bases covered.
And those are all very good questions. Again, this is put together in the best that we know of at this point. Based on the tenant leases that we've had at Edgewood. It has been working very well as a partnership that the conversation happens on a regular basis. And then there have been things that at Edgewood Tavern, they've requested and as the owner, we've said, no, it's not in the budget right now. And they've then decided to either do different programming or figure out how to fund it elsewhere. And so I look at it very much as a good faith partnership. That's what we advertised that we wanted was a partnership that we weren't wanting to just have a tenant that would do their own thing and not partner with us with the golf. And and from our interviews with Andy and his staff, we feel that at this point, he and Matt with the Golf Pro Shop would be able to work together successfully to do a really great golf operation that will enhance the golf service that we provide.
So if I so if I'm looking at it to exhibit one, four is the asset list, right? We're basically saying here's all the assets in the building. They can use them if they want. Now, if they say, we don't like these. We don't like these glasses or these plates, more than likely, they're going to probably buy their own plates like, but we're saying you can use these. This comes included. You can use them if you want or if you don't want. I mean, it's not very common that a a tenant in a restaurant space is going to go to their landlord and say, we need dishes and we need dish racks and you know, silverware and all that stuff. That's almost always going to be on the tenant, the tenant side.
And this list was also provided to all of those that toured ahead of time before proposals were asked for. Because again, in good faith, we wanted to let people know what we owned and what they would have use of.
Right.
But I don't have a problem with. I mean, if we have these dishes, we have no use for dishes. We have no use for stem glasses. We have no use for all this stuff. I have no problem with them using all these things. But I don't want to keep replenishing things like that that we don't have a use for otherwise. So in my mind, it was, yeah, if we if we have all this stuff, why wouldn't they use it if they want? And then when it's gone, it's gone. Was where kind of my brain was going with with use up the assets when they're gone, there it's on the tenant.
Well, as Aaron was saying, it's kind of assumed that those things would be in place for a new tenant. What is the length of the lease?
It's five years with the opportunity to renew for two additional five year terms.
Okay. So you haven't had any problems with this kind of a policy in the past in other locations?
This is very much a turnkey operation and a seven month operation, which is different than what we've done at Edgewood. Also different than what we did prior with Biggers and Legends. But again, when we were working with Divas and Mark Melby, we had very similar arrangement with the equipment that was up there.
So is there any, this is just general information for me. Is there any prediction as to a percentage of how much damage there is per say for plates and glasses?
I don't have that information. I I don't know if Andy with his previous operations would have any idea of what average breakage is for dishes. I know that we don't have a lot of dishes, so he's going to have to supplement that anyway.
Thank you.
So do we have a budget for Edgewood? For the operation up there, that an annual replacement budget?
We have a annual budget for capital improvements, repair facilities and mobile as as needed. And it's a general for the clubhouse and for the golf and the restaurant operations. So yes, we do.
Well, the reason.
So what do we? What's our annual spend on restaurant operations? Do you know?
I would have to look that up. I know that when we put together the estimate for Rose Creek, it was ninety six thousand dollars. I don't know that we did a comparison at Edgewood. Again, Edgewood is a smaller building and it has a different footprint that we operate.
Did you say the operational cost for Rose Creek, the building is ninety six thousand?
That was for utilities and property taxes, everything put together that we've been aware of for the last year or average of years, depending upon what we had access to.
Insurance?
Yep.
Insurance part of that? So those are annual operating costs for Rose Creek.
Yeah, if we were, if we were paying a hundred percent of everything to keep it functional for twelve months, that's our estimate.
So then most likely the breakage is going to be something min- minuscule by comparison.
Yes, we would anticipate that. Again, our tenant would take good care of the property.
I I just, we're we're splitting hairs over cups and plates and those are easy things to break. I think the the point is, the question is that Vicky's saying is is whether or not we want to, we want to invest in the, you know, as things wear out, for she brought the TV, for example, like they can replace the TV or are we going to replace the TV? I mean, that to me is a really good question because the TV is going to wear out in a in a period of time. And you know, I honestly don't know what the right answer is because if for some reason the relationship goes away, I don't want them going around going, that's ours, remove, leave that one, you know, or where we're ending up having to buy things from somebody anyway. So so that I think really is the question because when we start talking about cups and plates, well, those things easily break and it's trivial what one plate costs, whatever. But I think overall, conceptually, that's the question. So what's the answer to that question? What is the, what does this lease currently say that are we going to replace things like I'm going to use the TV instead when that goes out or are they going to? And I'm just curious what that answer is.
If it's ATV, TVs could be less than five hundred dollars. And so our tenant would be responsible for that.
So just to clarify, it doesn't say in fifteen point three, anything about things less than five hundred dollars. Under maintenance repairs in fifteen point one, it talks about less than five hundred dollars. So I don't know if you need to add something to fifteen point three to say, you know, I don't even care if you say kitchen equipment or if you say kit, you know, assets, equipment, one point four assets greater than five hundred dollars in cost. I mean, you could go buy a two hundred dollar TV or you can buy a seven hundred dollar TV, you're going to end up with a similar TV. But but at at least you got a dollar amount you're working with in fifteen point three, you don't have a dollar amount at all.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think personal property and equipment is different than nominal maintenance and repairs.
Right.
And we did discuss this during the interview process at length, very similar to what we're discussing here. And and really, I think the intent in a nutshell to get to Vicky and Joe's question is anything over five hundred dollars, we would agree that we would resupply in a conversation with them about what's needed. With the intention being this is a turnkey operation now and in the future. And part of the offset for that is the percentage we're getting of gross sales, which as we've run through the numbers and worked with them in the presentation, we feel is enough to offset any of those things. One of the things that Luke and I have discussed as we go forward, if 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 this becomes the partnership and it gets approved, this is a little bit to Jerry's question. You know, maybe what we want to do is as part of that twelve percent of sales, have a set aside for these types of things annually so that it doesn't have to be embedded solely into our existing equipment, repair, maintenance budget. It can be part of the operations here because I think one of the differences here than than what we've seen in the past is we as the landlord are responsible for all costs. And as an offset to those costs, we get twelve percent of sales and then it ratchets it up as they are more successful. And part of the goal there is that we want to help them be successful. We want to create a partnership where we don't provide barriers to success because of overhead and we will make that up as a share of profits as they go forward. So really, I see it as anything over five hundred dollars. And it doesn't mean Andy gets to say, I want this, this and this, and it's five oh one and above, and you must do it.
Correct.
It is. Let's have a conversation about what it is, but we're really making the investment in a turnkey operation now and going forward.
Yeah, that was that was I was just going to say in fifteen one, that's the way I interpret that is that if it's if it's under five hundred dollars, we're not even they're not coming to us. But if it's over five hundred, then they would potentially come to us and then we open up that discussion. And more than likely, TVs probably wouldn't be included. And you know, in the way I'm reading this, this is going to be more structural building things or more than likely kitchen equipment or things like that, right? That are going to be very kind of important to the operation of the business, not something like a TV or a marketing POS or things like that. If there's a major issue with the draft system or a refrigeration unit or something like that, to me, that would trigger that, right? And then it becomes a discussion of maybe we put all the cost and then spread it out back into, you know,
Maybe, maybe we put all the cost and then spread it out back into, you know, rent somehow or we split the cost or we.
And I understand, I mean, that was why we agreed to buy the, the, all these items because we knew we needed to help somebody get in there. Get going without all the upfront investment. Makes perfect sense to me. It again, fifteen point one has to do with maintenance and repairs. It doesn't have to do with the personal property. Fifteen point three is what addresses the personal property of the Park District. And that piece, that fifteen point three does not indicate a dollar amount. So I think we need to add that in there if that's what our intention is.
Is that something Jeff that could be added and?
Yeah, we can certainly add that. I'd just say. Then the, the only difficulty becomes. At the end of a term, we're now trying to figure out whose cups are whose and whose plates are whose or whose TVs are whose. Because if we're relying on the tenant to replace and buy these things, it'd become their property. For them, generally speaking, it'd be their property for them to take out with them. So again, I guess the way I just conceptualize this was, you know, that we as the landlord are going to have a budget of. Maintenance and repairs. If part of that goes towards plates and cups or whatever, that, that could be fine. We would then own them or TVs or kitchen equipment replacement. But if they need those things and it's not within our budget that we are gonna mutually agree on. Then they'd have two options, either go, one, go without them or be replacing themselves and it would be theirs. And so, I mean, we can put a dollar amount in or the tenant in my mind is gonna, he, there, he's gonna have to pick and choose certain things. Because in a given year, we're not gonna potentially be able to replace everything on his list, for example.
And, and I'm okay with it not being in, I mean, what I'm saying is it's not in there now. And people are alluding to say that it, it is in there and it's not in there. There's nothing in there about five hundred dollars for the personal property. That's just maintenance and repairs up above. The last question I had, and I'm assuming this would be an insurance claim kind of thing, this would get covered that way. But at the very, on the very last line of fifteen point three, it says that is caused by the negligent or intentional acts of the tenant. You know, they go in and they trash the place. I don't expect that to happen, Andy. But the question I have is about a customer. So a customer goes. And is a customer of the, the tenant and they decide to have a problem. There's a fight, there's who knows what, somebody gets mad, they throw crap, they break TVs, whatever. Then whose issue is that? And is that, maybe it's addressed somewhere else. I'm assuming we'd file a claim, they'd file a claim. But does that have to be indicated here?
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, are those types of things with property damage and personal liability covered in line? So nine, nine point one, the whole section nine is about insurance. And I believe as I had read through this, and this is pretty standard language with what would happen in a landlord tenant situation, but I'll yield to your expertise of that.
Well, one of the things in reference to this long discussion is that it is a turnkey operation at this point. And I'm assuming that everything is in good stead, that it's a, a good place to be moving into if you're a tenant. And that we want to make sure that that, that status remains. So that if there is something going, goes wrong with the lease or your next tenant. That you're going to still have that turnkey operation, that's going to be attractive to a future tenant. So I just think that if, if we're nickel-diming everything, you know, there'd be probably more of a tendency. For things to begin to dissolve or disintegrate in terms of quality. So I just think that it's the Park District's responsibility to make sure things are kept in good stead.
That's all the questions I had.
Okay, so do we want to make a motion?
I do have a.
Got a question.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Explain how the banquet space is gonna work.
At this point, what we have agreed upon is that the spaces that Andy's responsible for are the kitchen, the kiosk. And the storage areas that he needs for his equipment area and the Park District would maintain the banquet space. For cleaning purposes as well. And we also had, had some discussions with the city that that may help us with property taxes. And so based on that, we, our intent is that the Park District as the owner of that banquet space. Would basically have a facility use agreement with Andy for the use of that when Andy is in operation. Primarily for the use of golf tournaments and anything relative to the golf business.
And is that exclusive, exclusive catering for their?
He has, based on this arrangement, he has exclusive food and beverage in that space.
Got it, unless he decides he can't or they don't want to or whatever, okay.
And if he would have a desire to use that space for graduation party or something else during the time of this lease. Then he would reach out to us, we would set up an arrangement. And the fee for that would basically be included with the twelve percent that he makes on the operation that he does in there. For the reservation.
My question is on the, so termination on their side. Let's say they give it a try this year and decide they don't like it, they're just. I mean, because it's technically kind of a five-year term, but there's really no. Term, if you think about it like that, right? There's no, nothing on the hook if they get one year in and say, never mind.
Because if you make zero dollars, we don't get anything. Sure.
Well, we'd be able to, you know, two things, one, we'd have an obligation to find a new tenant. And then you're correct, to the extent that we find a new tenant on less favorable terms, we could sue. These guys for reach a contract. But you're right, it's, it's a more difficult claim for what our monetary damages are. The one thing that we'd have is we'd have at least. Historical sales from twenty twenty-three to say, here's what they likely would have paid in rent in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And here's what we're getting in rent and it's less, but it's a lot harder of a claim than, than a set dollar amount. And so it is a lot tougher to prove, correct?
True, okay.
Anyone else? Is there a minimum rent at Edgewood?
Edgewood? No, it is set up as a percentage only.
And we talked about the distinction between minimum rent versus mandatory hours being open. And what was settled on was the tenant agreed to mandatory op, hours of operation. Both for the bar restaurant, the kiosks area, area and for golf carts, which, you know, in our mind, it's, you know. It's not a mandatory minimum dollar amount, but if you're agreeing to be open this number of hours. You're probably gonna hit whatever mandatory minimum that we would have put in. And the minimum number probably would have been low anyway, so.
Again, we're back to our, our need is to provide service to the golfers.
Andy, I, I take this back, I do have another question for you and you don't have to get up, I think it should be a pretty easy question. So I was looking at the hours of operation, are these similar to what you do in Moorhead? Okay. Cause I noticed like the middle of the summer, the golf carts stopped going around at eight PM. You know, it's based on things like that. Do, you know what? I'm sorry, you probably need a microphone because Jerry's.
Jerry needs to hear.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you.
So the question on the hours, those are the minimum hours that we're gonna operate. It's not what we most likely will do, but those are the minimum set. We do stay open later in the summertime, sometimes past eight o'clock. It's really course sensitive, it's weather sensitive. It depends on what's going on. But in our negotiations, this was just the minimum set that we're willing to staff and be open. You know, one of the challenges of the Rose Creek environment is you have three different areas that you need to staff and you need to staff with a lot of people. And you have a full kitchen. It's, it's quite a large operation for, for staffing and it's a really huge expense to, to do that. Especially when there's not very many people on the course. So we agree to do that as a minimum, but just keep in mind, it's only a minimum, not what actually can happen in the summertime. Hopefully if it's busy and people stay till midnight, we're fine with that. And that does happen from time to time, so, you know, this, just because it's a minimum doesn't mean that's all we're gonna do.
Well, and I was just more curious if this is similar to what you were doing in Moorhead and if this is.
It's very, very, very close to.
See as the solid hours and sometimes you get some bonus time.
I would say it's very, very close to what we do in Moorhead. What we've come to see, and I'm sure you guys see at your other courses, is that the mornings are, are pretty, pretty quiet over on the golf courses. Other than a few people taking some early rounds, but they don't really participate in the restaurants.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Would someone like to make a motion?
Say, I have to, I'm going to abstain on any, yeah, I haven't, I'll have to, not have to, but should.
Well, I, we, I move that we. Do I have the wording here? Motion to approve the lease for the restaurant at Rose Creek Public Golf Course as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? Dave, do you hold the board here?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosted?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? With Commissioner Hill abstaining.
Motion passed. Unless there's something else, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
All right.